I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If there's for a moment of silent reflection and keep the disaster that happened down in Dallas with the police shootings in your mind. Thank you.
Persing?
Here.
Kramer?
Here.
Rechner?
Here.
Henrys?
Here.
Eister?
Through with the minutes of the fire department, police department, treasurer, controller, engineer, code office, health department, public works, redevelopment authority. That's it? One second?
Eister? Persing?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Here.
Henry?
Not too much on the agenda, is there? Any audience comment on any agenda items at this time? Yes, sir.
I want to speak on behalf of the new best hiring of part-time administrative chief. And quite honestly, I don't know Assistant Chief Miller. The only thing I have to say is this, I think that something needs to be done. Something needs to be done, something, some direction needs to go. But hiring a part-time person for this position, that really opens up a lot of problems along with the fact that if the newspaper is anything actor, but what was in there today about the fact that the information in there that will be coming down here later in the evening and that its first priority is Williamsport. And again, I don't know if that's actor or if that is an actor, important what newspaper had said. But if that is the fact, we're shortchanging ourselves. I believe we need go in that, in a direction where we have somebody that's in charge. But hiring an administrative person to this that doesn't have arresting power or investigative powers creates a backlog of information, not along with the fact that if Assistant Chief Miller needs to contact somebody during the day who is no longer on duty, does that create an overtime situation? Is that going to create additional dollars that's going to cost the city for what's going on? And if there's calls that have to be made during the day by whoever, Assistant Chief Miller, is he able to take those calls? And how often can he take those calls? And when can he take those calls? I think, in all fairness to the city, I think there's a lot of ways of solving this and bringing somebody in. I just don't think a part-time evening person is the way to go. I think someone needs to be available 24 hours a day because you never know when something's going to happen. You have the Dallas situation, you've got what happened in Michigan, just the same with you with the shootings up there. There's a lot of bad things that go on all the time and our police are the people on the line. They need to have guidance 24 hours a day, but not just in the evenings. And I'll do respect you, because I, again, I know you're more than qualified to do this job. The problem is doing it on a part-time basis is where I think our problem is, or at least my problem is. I don't think it says city getting money, I don't think it solves any problems, and I don't think it brings us to a point where the citizens are feeling any more safe. And I don't know if it brings any closure to someone in charge at the police department that's going to be able to solve or address issues. There's going to be a constant delay in addressing issues, and I don't know if that's the way to go. So, I would say that, you know, I would ask that you reconsider this and table it for tonight and maybe advertise or maybe be able to find someone who can be here more time than is currently there. And I don't know you, and I think you're probably a very good person.
Excuse me, Spaggy, let me ask one question. How do you know that he's more than qualified?
Well, if he's the assistant police chief of Williamsport, I'm sure that they have the all promises.
So you're assuming.
Okay, I'm making an assumption that he is more than qualified, and I'm pretty sure that my assumption is kind of right.
Assumptions can get you.
Do you have a comment on the audience?
Is this the time when we can ask questions?
No, that's on the, that's on the agenda. No, we're not asking questions, you're allowed to make a comment. That's what it says here.
So, if I wish to ask questions about this at a later time?
Anything that's on this agenda.
Well, I do have questions about the chief, about your wanting to make the selection decision. But is this the time that I do that?
This is your comment, you want to make a comment like he did, we're not going to, it's not a question-answer thing. When we get to that part, we'll talk about what's in the contract and people vote.
And I will be able to ask questions such as, how would you make this decision, that's at that time at a later date?
Yep.
All right, well, I would like to make one comment, Regina Russell, community activist. I don't think that we need to go outside anymore because we have a good chief. We had a good chief, you demoted him, we really never got to know why he was demoted. But the people's chief was Chief Mazzio, and he was an excellent chief, he did his job well. I don't know what went on during council, I don't believe he ever disrespected you or anyone on council, but he should be put back in that position. Thank you.
Any comment on anything on the agenda? CDBG public meeting, I don't see Dan here, so it must be scheduled, we must have that wrong spot, we have to go next, we're going to hold that the next time. SRI, Megan? No, redevelopment, there's nothing either, I'm sorry.
I only have a couple items. One is that T-Biz is currently working together with H2 on the, agreeing on the conference at 604 Market Street. Also, the Lake Dust Wine and Brew Festival, the tickets are currently being sold through our outlets. Please try and get out there and get those if you can, they will be available online directly if they are already. For people that are from outside of town looking to get those, the entertainment will be Runway Stroller and Royal Benson. We are also holding the first Sunbury Business Meet and Greet, July 20th at the SRI office. We're trying to encourage all downtown virgins to get together and talk about business there, so hopefully someone can attend. That's 4:30 to 6:30 at SRI on July 20th. And we had a great success at the first movie on the river, over 400 people easily, over 400 people attended. There's a lot of excitement even with the rescheduling, from it being rained out on Tuesday night to getting pushed away tonight, it was still an amazing turnout. A great night, the staff really, yes, our staff really helped initiate that initiative and we had a movie screen that was built just for that and it worked beautifully. So, we're really pleased. The next movie is The Peanut Smack on July 10th. And Chicano Marsh and I think did really well at that event, they are, were a professional. And I also, slate has information on River Festival.
Megan, before we go, there was comments up at Sunbury Celebration, numerous comments about how pleased they were about the movie, the children stuff over on the river, there was a lot of people commenting.
I would like to say about the movie, the movie is absolutely free, there is no admission cost. So, the families can come, they can bring their own snacks, they don't have to buy off the chic, they'll be there. Like you said, we had a reporter people there, and that was initiated by our office people. That's something I'm pretty excited about because it did go real well, and it's absolutely free. It's being sponsored by Wise Markets and Tony's Taylor Shop and Triangle Tech, our screen holder. So, it was a really great night, so if you get a chance, bring your family, your grandkids, your kids to our next movie night coming up. What, Lori?
July 23rd.
July 23rd.
July 26th.
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 So, I'm not here for River Festival, it's approaching fast, we're about a month out. This year, we're going to have a couple things different, we're going to have a 5K race Saturday morning. That's being put on by the JRTC from Chicano High School. We're going to have our band Jesse Friday night. We're going to also have a Friday at 12 noon cardboard boat race between myself and Mark Larts. Our boats are being built by other people and they will be in the boat with us. So that ought to be really interesting. I can't wait for that. And then Saturday, we have all things, we have a different entertainment this year, we have Taekwondo. We're going to have some gymnastics, some dance groups. It's not going to be all singing and music this year, we're running out of a good mix. And then Saturday night, we'll have River Festival after hours, tribute band, being sponsored by Sunbury Motors. And we're not sure who the band is for that yet, but it's a month out and we're doing pretty well, we're pretty happy, pretty excited. And no, Chester Street will be open this year, right Dale? Sweet.
Unless we can get $4 million between now and then.
Jimmy, you got $4 million?
We thought you'd tell me that.
Yeah.
Any questions, SRI? New business, our part-time administrative police chief. All councils had the opportunity to talk to the person under my nominee tonight, and everybody has had a copy of the contract over the weekend, so everybody gets to see that. I just want to point out a couple things in the contract. This is clearly a part-time administrative job. It'll vary somewhere, it's a maximum of 16 hours per week. We're allowed, unless something comes up that we need to, you know, to pay him more, it's based on $42 an hour. Something's up to around $35,000 a year. The contract is set up, it'll last for one year. It'll go from that until July of 16 to July of 17, at that time, it will be a six to eight month extension. If both parties want to go that route, and at that time, the city can decide if they want to keep using it part-time, if they want to go to full-time. The reason I brought up the 16 and 35,000, that would leave me approximately $100,000. Hopefully by the end of the year, then I can use that money towards another police officer. So my goal would be to try to get into their office or on the street at the end of the year, but that'll all be, you know, we'll see what happens when it comes to budget time, as far as that goes. But as you can see in the contract, everything is in there, what's broke down as far as its authority. People have to understand is the structure of our police department, we have, and it's always been this way, we have a chief, we have two sergeants, two corporals, and then you have the patrolman underneath that. The way the structure is supposed to work is, and what the new chief will be doing, is being controlled pretty much of the two sergeants that are both out right now due to injuries, and the corporals, and then their responsibility gets solidified, and then the people that work underneath them, that's how that works. So, 2002 was the last time we had administrative chief. There's pros and cons either way. It was in my opinion that with all the situations that we've had here in the past six, eight months, we had to go outside, there was no way I could seek coming from within. The people talk about the responsibility of chief, most of you that sit out here don't understand it. Every time there's a new chief hired, there's new responsibilities. Some chiefs come in and don't do anything that the last chief does, there's nowhere in writing exactly what the chief's responsibilities are, so it's not his responsibility to do the schedule, for example, it's not his responsibility to do those parking tickets. He pretty much, again, works with the supervisors, and that's what we have in the structure, it hasn't been changed at all. So what we're able to do is, he will work within the structure, everybody knows we're in arbitration right now with our police contract, so there's some things that may have to change after that, but the bottom line is, he will work within the structure of our existing contract, get everything up to date, standing operating procedures up to date, just to make it more efficient and a much more community-friendly police department. And that's how we're going to work for that year, and again, we'll continue next July, we'll see if we want to, this is working perfectly, we're going to continue it, we want to go full-time, or maybe both parties, somebody wants to step away and go another direction, that's up to them. But right now, what we need is an administrative chief, in my opinion, and that's what is before you now in the contract, and everybody's had a chance to see it, that's what we're voting on tonight. Now, we're not debating anything, but if anybody wants to make a comment, you're more than welcome to make a comment before the vote. Yes?
The administrative chief that you had in, what did you say, 2002?
Yes.
Who was that, and was he or she?
Drawn again.
Was he or she full-time?
He was full-time, yes.
And what was the outcome of that, that it was taking such a long time to get back to that format?
Well, we've always promoted from within, and the guys that promote from within, so it's.
As an administrative chief?
Yeah, as both, as on the street and as administrative, and in my opinion, the administrative part has always lacked since then. Because every chief is doing it.
And what value do you think is going to be a part-time chief? No disrespect to you, Mr. Miller.
It's exactly what we need right now, we need to get this administration part straightened out, yes.
And if there is a storm here in Sunbury and a storm in Williamsport, we're going to be.
No, there's nothing, there's nothing to do with Williamsport. You want, that will be not be involved in this in any way, shape, or form.
That's not true.
Yes, it is.
That's not true.
Yes, it is.
Williamsport is going to be involved in this because Williamsport is its first priority. Its first priority is Williamsport, and that was made very clear by the mayor and the chief up there. Williamsport is its first priority.
As far as his job, yes.
As far as his job.
His job as a policeman.
As a policeman.
There will be no tie-ins between that and his job as a chief in the city of Sunbury as an administrative chief only.
But it will overflow into that if there's things that have to be gained during the day.
You know, people keep talking about things that might have to be done. In four months' time, there wasn't a single thing in the city of Sunbury that we had to have achieved for. The only couple calls that I did get were something, if somebody called me three days before and called me with the same thing again, it's the third day. This is not a place that, anything can happen, I agree with that, anything can happen, but these people all have job responsibilities, and we're going to see that the job responsibilities get done.
Well, if what you're saying is true, that you had no phone calls during that time, there was something hadn't been right, where's why that we hired an administrative chief now?
Because we have SOPs and a standing operating procedures from back in 2003. First thing you did is, we're bringing in the stuff, you know, in 2003, you didn't write about iPads and telephones, because there was no cellphone, well, it might have been cell phones, but there was no iPads. So this is the kind of stuff that needs updating, we're 10, 13 years behind them now, we need to get this stuff updated.
And you have nobody to do that now? And you have nobody on the staff to do that now? You had administrative assistant for a while.
We were sort of sent away to the Pennsylvania, what do they call it, the Chiefs, Chiefs Association, that's who does that, that's a $20,000 bill.
But we have nobody on staff that should do that now, and none of that's being done now? There's nobody that's preparing, there's no one that is preparing updates to the policies at this point?
The chief always, the chief is always there.
Is there anybody that's doing that right now?
No.
Are you sure?
Well, there's, everybody can write anything, any police officer can write something, I'm talking about to put them officially together.
Then what are you doing as an active chief?
Accepting phone calls if they want to, I'm a, yeah, I'm an active chief, I'm just the active chief by default, I didn't, I'm a policeman, I don't do anything like that. And when people call, if there's a situation, they call me, but I'm telling you, I got about three calls in four months. Because they did their responsibilities, that's what the supervisor's supposed to do, sergeants and corporals have responsibilities. If they do their responsibilities, the thing runs smooth.
One moment, Mr. Miller, have you really?
Whoa, 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 we're not debating, we're not debating, you want to debate with me, we're not debating out here.
I just want to make a statement to him.
You make a statement up here.
Do you really know what you're getting into if you come into this city? You should really research.
Don't answer that, we're not answering questions. Come on, come on, go ahead.
How do you come up with salaries for part-time at that rate?
That's an average, if you've looked at the averages of the salaries of chiefs in the area, that would be pretty much an average.
Okay, I just want to know how you get that.
No problem, that's how we did it. Yes, Regina?
Mr. Mayor, I do have some questions, please. I'm going to be quick about them. How did you decide on Mr. Miller, how did you decide Mr. Miller was the best person for the job?
I looked through about 32 applications.
That's what, that was my second question. And who will he report to and take directions from?
Same place he always does, the mayor.
The mayor. Okay, should he become ill, who will replace him during his absence?
Senior sergeant.
And who would that be, sir?
If everybody's back to work, that would be Mr. Taylor, Sergeant Taylor.
Okay, now, he'll be taking over in July, I'm going to presume that these other sergeants will still be out on leave. So therefore, who calls after those two?
Corporal, Corporal Harris is our senior officer right now.
Okay, and how long have you known him, or have you been friends with him before you swear I'm into office?
No.
No? Okay, and will he be required to attend the meetings that you've had, all the other past chiefs? It seems like every chief that you've had in office has always had to attend these meetings, as well as other meetings that you may attend.
His goal is to get to at least one a month, yes.
One a month, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Could you clarify something, Mayor Persing? And the paper referred to an assistant chief, not a chief of police, which one is it?
I didn't read the paper, so I don't know. We're hiring a part-time administrative chief.
Well, it said assistant chief, not chief.
I don't want to have, I'd read the paper.
That's what they said, I said they're incorrect.
Maybe the paper was wrong.
If that's what it said, it's incorrect.
Francis has to.
No, Francis didn't make a mistake, actually.
Mr. Lamb, Mr. Miller, I believe is the assistant chief at Williamsport currently.
Yeah.
I don't know anything else, but when I read it on the phone, it's, it's a part-time administrative chief is what the city of Sunbury is looking at him to do. He is, right now, currently an assistant chief in the city of Williamsport with, and I'm going to make a statement, I don't know if it's exactly accurate or not, but pretty close to 18 or 19 years of service, one to four. If there's an assistant, it was that he is an assistant chief at Williamsport at present.
Okay, I'm questioning Mr. Miller, I just, the papers are a bit obscure about how it was described.
And I didn't read, I just scanned the top thing, but I think he, he's an assistant chief, at least. The information we got when we were discussing the different, the different applicants that the mayor and I were down to, he is an assistant chief at Williamsport currently.
Right, thank you.
One more question, please, Regina Russell. Mr. Mayor, now, he will report to you, so if something happens to you, who is the next in command on this city council?
The finance director.
All right, thank you.
It's the finance, the finance director. I do want to emphasize the health insurance and other paid leave, so everybody understands additionally, shall not be eligible for any longevity, no overtime pay, no compensatory time, or pension benefits. That's a, that's a big issue with the contract right now, but it doesn't matter because he's not within that contract.
So it's only 16 hours?
16 hours a week, if something comes up that I need him, I have the authority to hire him at that same rate. If some, for some project we needed to get done or something, I want to hire him, it could be more than that. But his salary and everything is based on a maximum of 16 hours per week, yes.
And what would be the maximum hours?
Well, it's my bed, it would be my budget, I mean, right now, we're planning on 16, budget for 16. If something pops up, then it would be, let's say, some project pops up and he has to do 20 hours, it's going to take 20 hours to get it done or something. I don't even know what that would be, all fam, we just have that in the contract case something would come up. Maybe, maybe there's a lengthy standing operator, cell phone, for example, you need to talk to someone. If that comes up, then we have the authority to do that, but that's not the plan. And I know councils, it was very concerned when we talked, because we know what it's cost, what it may cost us from the contract, which is up for arbitration right now, but none of that, none of that is used. So, ladies and gentlemen, before you listen to the contract.
Excuse me? Do you have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to know if you're going to continue with your open door policy that's been a supreme problem for chiefs in the past?
And anybody in this, anybody in this room can come see me in the office.
No, no, the officer is not following the chain of command and the open door policy which you have had for years in place. I'd like to know if you intend to continue that, I think Chief Miller should be aware of that.
Yep.
Good luck. So they can go over his head and go to you or council?
Anybody can come into my office and talk to me about anything. Always been that way for the 20-some years I've been doing this. That doesn't mean, it always went over anybody's head, if somebody asked something they think was illegal or something that went weren't treated right, they have, anybody has the right to come and talk to me.
Well, councilwoman, will councilwoman crime always be informed of what's going on? Will she always be included in what's going on, so that, like I said, if something does happen to you, she is well informed?
Yes.
I'm not going to sit here and say every little thing that happens, no, but she's, and again, it's the finance director, she changes, let's say she goes to another department next year, it would be whoever the finance director is, not just that, that's by the city code.
Thank you.
Okay, so in front of you is a contract, and I just want to, I want to make the motion that the agreement is effective today, and Timothy S. Miller is what will be our new chief of police, and everything else is explained in there.
One more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Would the citizens be able to review that contract?
I'm, I guess, that's right, it's, yeah, like anything else, just stop and see, Terry, we'll get a comment, yep. So I believe it's public information.
Oh, yeah, it is.
I have a motion.
One second.
On the second.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes. Now, we're not here to debate, but we are here, Mr. Miller, would you like to say a few words? And we will have in the next, I'm going to say within the next two weeks, we'll have some sort of an open house, maybe down at SRI, I'll talk to Megan, maybe we can get something there, Saturday morning coffee or something.
Don't forget the donuts.
If you don't mind, I'll pull up for a new office.
That would be very professional, thank you.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'll stand back there if I can read. Wow, if I didn't know any better, I think you guys were trying to run me out of here. And good thing is, I brought my, my kids here, I got my son Christian, my son Mitchell, my daughter Savannah, and then my beautiful girlfriend Nicole, who also happens to be my best friend here with me tonight. And it's important for them to see things like this, to see how government works, and to kind of see what I go through on a daily basis. This is nothing new to me. I'm glad that you have passionate people in your community that are really concerned about the things that are going on, so basically, what I learned from tonight is the fact that there are passionate people here who care about their police department. And that's really the reason I'm here. Mayor Persing and I have been battling this thing around for months, as to whether or not this was going to happen. And I was back and forth, I got to be honest with you, for at least three months, we were back and forth, and I wasn't sure if this was something that, you know, that I'd be interested in or not, but when it all boils down to it, I view the city of Sunbury as a city in need, and I'm a public servant. So I'm honored and I'm excited to have been the person chosen to architect change here in the city of Sunbury. But my children and my girlfriend sitting back here, it's really them who will be making the sacrifice and sharing those precious hours of my part-time. Yes, I am an officer in the city of Williamsport, yes, I am a dedicated public servant in the city of Williamsport. But it's them, it's these folks sitting back here, while I'm here serving you folks, they will be at home waiting for me to come home safe. And that's a huge sacrifice for them, because if it wasn't with their approval, I wouldn't be here today, standing in front of you, taking the criticism, taking the comments from the public, and listening to it. I just wanted to thank them publicly for their unwavering support, their unconditional love. My children grown up, sons and daughters of a public servant, and they're well aware of what my sacrifices are. I make no decisions like the one that I made to accept this position without their input, so I want to take the opportunity to thank them for sitting here, for listening to your comments, for supporting me in this endeavor. Yes, it is a big job, no doubt, this is a huge task, but I've never ran from anything in my life. One thing that nobody does know about me is, I was a four-round draft pick by the San Diego Padres back in 1993, I was the Pennsylvania Player of the Year. I played baseball for Florida State University, I was a Division I athlete. When I do something, I do it 100%, I don't do anything 10% or 50%, I'm an all or nothing kind of guy. I think the most important message that you need to hear from me tonight is that I don't do what I do to get anyone elected. And I've said that in my previous employer, and I say it here tonight, I don't stand here to do what I do to get people elected, that's not what I do on the public servant. Now, let me tell you a little bit about who I am, and just a little bit about my background, and then I'll step down here and let you folks continue city business. I was born and raised in Lycoming County, I'm the son of a former police chief, my father was the only chief in Williamsport's history to be chief under the Republican and Democratic mayor, which was a huge task. I have personally been employed as a law enforcement officer since 1997. I was a certified police officer in the state of Tennessee prior to coming to Pennsylvania for one year. I hold a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, and I graduated with honors from Cumberland University in Lebanon, Tennessee. I've held the following ranks throughout my law enforcement career. Patrolman, Corporal, Agent, Sergeant, Lieutenant, Captain, Assistant Chief. And I've also served in the following specialty positions. Community policeman, canine handler, narcotics officer, member of a special response team, this is our SWAT team, and I'm also now the team commander. My family has provided nearly five decades of police service. As my past work history will show, I'm a very dedicated and very progressive public servant. But ultimately, I believe that true public service has no boundaries, for example, public service does not stop at the boundaries on the name, where, on the shillee. Public service involves the voluntary act of putting oneself in a role that fills a need for someone else. I have always answered the call to serve my communities and will continue until I'm no longer in it. I do not perceive the community I serve as just a group of people living within a geographic. I do not perceive the community I serve as just a group of people living within a geographical boundary, rather, I see it as a spirit of cooperation with others as a result of sharing common attitudes, interests, and goals. I will not take these part-time duties lightly, and I will continue to be a devoted public servant, just as my family has for nearly five decades. I fully accept the challenges that lie ahead, and I look forward to partnering with you, the citizens of the city of Sunbury, and the members of the Sunbury Police Department, to create an environment where it is exciting to live and work. I thank you, members of council, for your vote of confidence, and I look forward to beginning the exciting process of building relationships with members of council, the public, and those who serve the Sunbury Police Department. I truly believe that together, we will make a better Sunbury. Thank you.
Jim, wave your open ordinance, open container ordinance?
Yes, open container. A couple here, August 20th River Festival, September 10th Renaissance Festival, September the 17th Wine Festival, and December the 31st Lunar Eve Celebration. I have to make a motion to waive the opening container on those events.
I'll second.
Reichner?